Midway today, and today really marks the finish line for a project that began in the spring, and I want to just highlight Satoshi's hard work. He and I talked in the spring about doing something to illustrate our school's rich history, from the two towns getting together, combining in 1959, all the way up to modern day and the retirement of tomahawk and the adoption of the titan. So I'll leave it to Satoshi to explain a little bit more, but I do want to thank all the people who supported him on this journey to complete this really wonderful and very kind of, it's a remarkable and stunning looking display, I think you would agree, that he undertook, and those were everybody from my assistant, Ms. Aggiezy, who worked with Satoshi and I over the summer, but really all the people around here, including Scout Master and his assistant Scout Master here tonight, to join him and support him in dedicating this really wonderful project. And before I pass it along to Satoshi, I will say I've worked with Eagle Scouts over my career as a principal. They come to me sometimes with really great ideas, and they're always outstanding, they always work incredibly hard, but I really think that this is an exemplary piece of scout work that will last in our building long after I'm gone and many of us have moved on and will be able to visit this installation, and we should all be very proud of Satoshi. So I want to give a round of applause for Satoshi Conway. This wonderful install, install it, and I'm going to pass on to Satoshi those few words.
So as you guys may or may not know, we, in 2021, we officially retired the tomahawk, and 2022 came around and we decided to vote on what we'd like to have as, like, that we would like to represent our community. So we ended up choosing the Titans, and in order to honor the previous mascot and showing the history of Algonquin and some of the, like, faults, like, within the past that we had, but in like a creative way, this shows how we've evolved, how we've been changed, and how we're going to respect other differences rather than mischaracterize them. So this whole journey was pretty long. I would like to thank all the people that helped me along the way, especially Dr. Riker Crawford, Ms. Aggiezy, Mr. Bevan. Dr. Riker Crawford was this professor from Washington, and she specializes in display cases and Native American heritage. So it was really helpful. She gave me the most important tip, which was to plan out the display case in like a 3D modeling software and then put into action. So I thought that that was really helpful. And along the way, Ms. Aggiezy, she was always there if I ever needed something, if I wanted to cut up some paper, like these, the styrofoam, she had X-acto knife, she had everything, should be on it, like, anytime I needed something. So I thought that that was super, super helpful for me. I'd also like to give a huge thanks to my scouts. Dex was there. He helped me on one of my Eagle Project workdays, and it was, like, the ideas that I got from the younger scouts were really helpful, because we had that board game, and it was like having trouble. We were having trouble thinking of a way to put it, to extend it up, but then Dex had this creative idea to fold it and then to balance it while presenting the currency that was used in it. So I thought, so I thought that that was super creative. Yeah, so I'd like to thank my parents, Mr. Bevan especially, he was here. He gave me a lot of valuable input. He hooked me up with the job, and thank you so much, guys.
So I do want to take a moment to note that a lot of Satoshi's work was to work with our historical societies, both in Northborough and Southborough, and to visit them and speak with them and ask them if there are things they'd like to donate. So for example, that football jersey, if I have it correctly, Satoshi's from the 1950s. Northborough High School predates the existence of Algonquin entirely, and that came from the historical society, as did some of our items in the display case, especially on the older side. And then some of these pieces came from our staff members and families, who we just put a call out and who brought things forward. That was really exciting work to see unfold. And then finally, I will note, we had these placards created, and each of them is actually different, and they articulate the timeline of what Satoshi has here, including some QR codes to more interactive content like YouTube videos. And for example, the mascot, formal recommendation is here, if somebody wanted to find what that, what is said in there. So our hope is that it would kind of activate learning around our journey as a school and the retirement of the mascot, and gives people the resources to do that.
I'm going to officially call the November, what are we, November 15th, Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee meeting to order, and to once again thank that phenomenal Eagle Scout for such an incredible display, and for all those thousands of viewers out there, I highly recommend that you come to Algonquin and take a look at the display case. You don't even have to go far, right next to the office. Okay, so first thing on the agenda after the Eagle Scout project is audience sharing. There being none, we will move on to action on the minutes of October 18th, 2023. Do I hear a motion? Paul?
I'll move that we approve the open meeting minutes of October 18th, 2023.
Second? Second by John. Do I hear any discussion or changes? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Excellent. All right, next is education policy, request from staff member for child to attend Algonquin Regional High School.
Sure, so Nicole, the member who is a longstanding Algonquin faculty member, is requesting that her son Tyler, the member, attend Algonquin Regional High School as a freshman for the 23, 20?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
I have a hard time saying that. Academic year. Principal Bevan did have conversations with Mr. Member, the student is in good academic standing, and I'll just note that Mr. Member's daughter currently attends Algonquin, and it's been a success story. So we have no reservations and would recommend the committee to accept enrolling full son Tyler for the 24, 25 school year according to policy J178.
Where is he from right now? Where is he supposed to go?
West West. West West.
Do you want to hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve that we accept the faculty member's child for the 24, 25 school year as a freshman.
Second? I'll say second by Karen, as I was looking at it. Are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Welcome Tyler, next year. All right, new business, Student Support Services Department presentation.
Sure, so this evening we have Carolyn Flynn here from Algonquin Regional High School. She serves as the department chair for Student Support Services, and she is going to provide the committee with an update. So welcome.
Hi, thank you very much for having me this evening. Algonquin, as you know, is an inclusion setting with students participating in the general education curriculum with support provided by the special education teacher. This is a list of our programs that we have here at Algonquin, starting with the most least restrictive on the left-hand side and moving in a wave-like fashion to more restrictive programs down below. So our academic learning centers that we have are, the first one, we have a number of those, and those for students with language-based, sorry, with moderate special needs disabilities. We have our language-based program where students learn language-based skills to apply in their general education classroom. We have our RISE program, which is for students with social emotional disabilities that affect them throughout the school day, and we'll hear a little bit more about that this evening. We have our Transitional Learning Center, one, sometimes we call it TLC. These are students who need more intensive academic, social, and communication needs. The teachers here focus on teaching core courses in English, reading, history, math, and science, and with the focus on the students participating as much as possible in general education classes. And then getting more restrictive, we have our Transitional Learning Center, too. These are for students who have intensive specialized, need intensive specialized instruction throughout the school day. And then we have our, our Community Action Program, our CAP program for 18 to 22-year-olds that provide training for successful employment and for independent living. And then we have our NAC partnership here, New England Center for Children, for students who has very intensive specialized instruction throughout the school day. Students always receive their, their services within these programs, services such as going to the reading tutor or speech and language or senior school adjustment counselor. All right. Next, I'd like to give you a bird's eye view into our RISE program. Last year, we had the opportunity to go ahead and hire a new liaison for the RISE program. Her name is Sarah Ryanbopp. She's a former alum of Algonquin, and along with Kelly Vieira, who's the school adjustment counselor, Kelly slid over from that position and to be a school adjustment counselor for the RISE program. And this is a video that I had that shows how they've tried to revise this program. Sorry, I have to go back.
Keith, you might want to, need the volume.
Okay, here we go. Start again, hold on. It worked when we tested.
Sure did.
Always the way.
Exactly, it's always the way.
Sorry.
No worries.
I didn't solve it.
Okay, I'm just gonna check on this for a minute.
Let's see if, Caroline, I think it might be that the audio is not coming through the, so let's just.
All right.
Just hang on one second.
RISE students are reaching individual success in education, and Sarah is going to deal with group control on the academic portion.
I'm Sarah Wondell. I'm the special education liaison for the RISE program. For RISE, we really focus on small group study for academic, for academic classes, and our students go through core classes of history, math, English, and science. And we have our classrooms level, so we have the lower classmen who are the math and technical years together, and our upper classmen who are 11 and 12 years. Some of our students in RISE have identified social emotional disability on their IEP, and so therefore they do receive counseling through their IEP services. I am the school adjustment counselor associated with RISE, so I communicate with these students either individually, I will go into classes and lesson with teachers, I come to the learning center and communicate with them here. They also have the ability, when they are serving during the day, to come seek me out and gain support, so we can get them back into classes or find an appropriate location for them to go when they're comfortable and able to move throughout the rest of their school day. Part of the RISE program, since it is therapeutic in nature, is making sure that we have a group of academic teachers who really understand social emotional learning. In order to make that a lot easier for our staff, we meet with them once a week at PLC, where we discuss student needs, we discuss any trends that we're seeing with our students, and we also do social emotional lessons on different disabilities, combinations that we can offer students with those disabilities. Our main goals for our RISE population is to show them that they have people for them at the building, that they're home, that they have their people to reach out to when they're having a tough day or a tough period or whatnot. They have safe, comfortable people that they can walk through and help talk through the issues that they may face that, that day, that month, whatever they need or they're in. Something that Kelly and I are really striving with our future RISE students is really fostering that sense of community to make amicable positive relations, not just amongst the RISE students, but the students at Algonquin. One of the ways that we're trying to do that is being a part of Algonquin as a community and not just in the RISE space. So next year, we're really excited to collaborate with the principal, with our freshman class, we're gonna go and help with the tiny Titans and engage with them, and it just provides a different source of outlet for those RISE students throughout the day. Part of that is allowing our students to come to school. We want them to feel as though they are connected to the larger Algonquin community, and our hope is that by engaging in those activities with the tiny Titans or even taking a field trip to learn about different options after high school, that they will feel a real sense of connection to the community here, and that will help them want to come to school more often.
So as, as a follow-up to that, so that, I did that, I took this last June, and they are going down, they're taking their freshman class down to the tiny tomahawks, and they are also taking their, the junior, senior English class has been going down there, too. So I, I'd like to, you know, Kelly and Sarah and along with all the RISE teachers are really looking towards trying to improve this program as they move through this year. So moving on to some department initiatives that I've taken, starting last year, one of them is the new IEP. So after 20 years, the Department of Education has created a new template for the IEP, and I have participated in training with some other school district personnel to develop a training program for our teachers. We've begun this training program already last month, and we will do it on a monthly basis with our teachers. We also will be developing training for all the other stakeholders in the district, you included, the administration, the parents and the students, and the general education teachers. Education is a monthly agenda item that I have on, for Student Support Services Department meetings. I have gone ahead and tried to keep them abreast of trends in education by like visiting the DESI website, looking for special education updates. I've had speakers come in to talk about MCAS. I've had the inclusion specialists come in for the, for the district to talk to us. I've also identified courses that teachers can take and how they can get them approved, just to further their education and keep, they keep them thinking about everything that's new in education and how they can apply it to their current position. And lastly, one of the biggest topics, as you know, for, for special education is the transition of our students from, you know, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 12th grade on into real life. So transition is a set of activities that an individual student engages in according to their needs, their vision of themselves, and their strengths, and their interests. So last spring, I was Jen Lipton asked me if I would create a video with my seniors that would be shown to third and fifth graders on how, on the advice that my seniors would give them on, on their differences that they have in what they've learned as they transition to post-secondary. And this is that video.
Hey, everyone, my name's Emma.
My name is Lauren.
My name is Avery, and we are part of the Constitutionally Graded Our Information High School. Today, we are going to be talking about our disabilities and how we overcame our struggles, and now we're going to.
My name is Avery, and one of the biggest things I struggled with freshman year was accepting help. So the biggest thing that is important is to accept help from the teachers and everybody around you, because they just want to see you succeed.
Really, where are you going today? Jump like your future.
Hi, I'm Lauren, and I'm going to be talking about a strategy that helped me throughout high school. Throughout high school, I've always struggled with taking tests. So I reached out to some of my teachers to get help for studying. I never really knew how to study, but now I'm going online and I can study. I take notes in class and participate. I also reach out to all the teachers that I have tests for, and now I am.
Sharing about all the advice that I am gonna give to you about how to deal with your differences throughout your learning years. One thing that I definitely recommend you do is stay organized. Organization was key for me with going to high school. Second of all, trust your teachers. Your teachers are here to help you. Go to help, go get help, whatever you need to do. And third of all, don't let your differences define you. You are your own person and everyone's.
Thanks to all for the help from the teachers in the Northborough-Southborough School District. We are planning on going to, I'm planning on studying hospitality at Endercod.
I'm planning on going to Ford College to get my bachelor's degree and studying in early education.
I am planning on going to the University of Alabama for nursing. Good luck to all of you.
Make sure to appreciate your teachers and always ask for help. You are all a good group.
Thank you. So they're so exuberant. So I really enjoyed having them. I enjoy having all my students, but I'd like to thank you for having me this evening, and if I could answer any questions, I'd be ready and able to. Yes?
I have a question about the RISE program. So do the students get all of their academics in that program, or are they like going to, like, are they getting, are they going there for English, math, social studies, you mentioned? Like, are they going to electives? Like, how is that structured?
Yes, they go to some of their electives. We do have RISE classes for ninth and 10th graders and 11th and 12th graders, and if they, they can elect to take some of their classes in RISE, or they can elect to take some outside of RISE, okay? But we, they would really let them to all be in the RISE program because, you know, other difficulties they have throughout the school day. And so.
Actually, what happens after the CAP program? And I just wonder if you have any kind of window of visibility into, you know, what kind of, what, what happens to all these kids after they leave that program?
Well, they usually go into other programs, either private programs or things by, from the state that they can go ahead and go into those types of programs that they procure, their parents procure that for them.
Do we keep any kind of stats on, you know, how many wind up working full-time jobs or living on their own?
Yes, I'm sure we do. Our Mini-Codier, our transition coordinator, would have all of that information. I don't have it on hand with me, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think part of the work in the transitional program is working with families also to access the variety of resources that they have access to, because it is challenging to navigate. So that's part of the work that we do as students age out of the CAP program and making sure they have good plans moving forward.
And we do have some transitional, we, we had a transitional fair for them on the night of open house here, and it's for families to come in and see, like, Special Olympics was here and other places like that where they could find viable employment opportunities or training for themselves. And, and there's also one in Mar, that's going to be happening in Marlboro, so all of our parents are, in those programs are aware, aware of that going on through Mini-Codier.
Okay, thank you.
I saw what he wrote down, I just.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Bye.
Keith, you want to shift spots?
When we're ready to do my report, which is soon.
Kathleen. Kathleen.
I'll be, I'll be able to kind of steer it as we go. You can review them now if you want, they're probably up in a few moments.
All right, next on the agenda is legislative, is legislative update.
So last week, Kathleen Howland attended the MAS, MAS joint conference. I believe she attended the resolution, the joint resolution session. So at the December meeting, she'll present her experience during that session. I do know that there was one resolution where there were no shortage of amendments and amendments to that amendments, and it was finally tabled. So I think a few of the Northborough and Southborough members who attended appreciated the highly functioning regional meetings. So we'll have a more detailed update at that, at the December meeting. The other piece of information that we're watching very closely is Governor Healy's supplemental budget for FY '24. We are sorting out information around funds for the 14% increase for out-of-district tuition. We don't have all the details, but there is language in that supplemental budget that we're monitoring very closely, and we're working with our legislative delegations to understand it. So as soon as we have more information, we will provide an update to the committee, but it is hopeful that there is some language in, in that supplemental budget.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of grants and donations.
So we have two donations. Principal Bevan, if you want to speak to those?
Sure. We had a visit from, a gentleman from Hot Table, which is a restaurant here just around the corner in the Apex Lot, and he wanted to post some signs to, to generate student employment, and while he was there, he dropped off some, this very generous donation that we're gonna use to, in the form of gift cards, that we're gonna use to incentivize students for a variety of things we haven't quite figured out yet. So we didn't ask him to donate this, but he came forward and we would have posted this kind of, these employment opportunities anyway, and we just have to come up with good ways to use this, these $15 gift cards, you know, in a variety of ways, which I anticipate will be easy to spend down very quickly, and kids would be happy to accept. And then the other one is exactly what it says there, a robotics team, which is a very kind of cost-intensive program and also very well-supported by our community, has accepted a, or would like us to accept this donation of $200 from Vidia Bank.
Excellent. Do you want to hear a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the gift tables from Hot Table in the amount of $225 to Algonquin with our thanks.
Yeah.
And to accept the donation from Vidia Bank in the amount of $200 with our thanks.
Excellent.
Second?
Second by John, moved by Chris. Any questions to session? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much to both those people. And next we have the principal's report.
So turn it back over to Principal Bevan.
All right. So first, you may recognize Amelia Sinclair, who's here in the place, who's a member of our Student Advisory Council and is here in the place of Cass Mello, who is currently working to support the Adams family, which is doing their dress rehearsal tonight. So we, you might have seen her in our, in our display case presentation. She was on her way to this, that other activity, which of course, we are cheering for her in her absence. So Amelia has presented for us before, and she's gonna be presenting the student report, so I'm gonna pass it along to her.
Okay, thank you so much for having me. I'm just gonna give a little report on behalf of the Student Advisory Committee. So some of the things I want to start off by discussing are just some student government updates. The Winter Ball is scheduled to be at the DCU Center on December 15th, and students from all grades are open to purchase tickets, and they are allowed to bring guests as well. And then for School Spirit, we had some recent events there and some upcoming ones as well. We had a very successful Halloween costume contest that took place during all three lunches on Halloween, and the PTO very generously donated a $50 Dunkin' gift card and two $25 Dunkin' gift cards for the winners. And then we also have our Spirit Week coming up next week, so Monday is Groufit Day, Tuesday is Jersey Day, and Wednesday is Color Wars, and the seniors will be black, the juniors will be pink, the sophomores will be blue, and then the freshmen will be white. And then along with that, we also have some fun events planned. We have the Dodgeball Tournament scheduled for Monday after school, and the pep rally Wednesday during school. And then, so the senior class, they're planning on having their senior ball at Watch You Sit. And then the junior class opted to not have homecoming this year, just due to a lot of complications with figuring out how it would work with the game not being on school premises and having to figure out transportation between the two. Additionally, the junior class is currently planning prom, and along with that comes fundraising, and we just had a fundraiser at the Southborough Transfer Station where we sorted and collected cans in partnership with the PTO, and that's in support of their post-prom party. And so next up, we have some school events. There we go, okay. So we have the Sophomore Social, which was an event the sophomores held after school on Halloween where they gave out free treats and little, and had little games available where they gave out free treats and little, and had little games available for, for members of the sophomore class. And then the junior class sold boo bags to students, which were delivered on Halloween morning to recipients' first-period classes. And then, as I mentioned before, the Halloween Costume Contest, but now you get to see our little flyer. And then the seniors had a smores and tie day event out on the field. And then DECA had their annual networking night where members of different professions joined students in here and students had the opportunity to speak to them about what they do. And then Harbinger had their Boston trip to a SNO conference, which is Scholastic Newspaper, where they got to kind of learn about other high school journalists and what they do and how to improve the newspaper here. And then, so next up, we have some school news. The Addams Family Musical is opening tomorrow night and you can purchase tickets online for tomorrow, Friday, or Saturday. That's what Cass is doing right now, so go Cass. And then the Metro West Health Survey was distributed Monday during F Block, which was our first-period class. And then we have the Thanksgiving football game. And the end of term one was this last Friday, so students' grades closed this week. And then, well, they closed last week, but you know what I mean. And then senior early college applications. Most schools close their deadline for early application on November 1st. Some schools have longer deadlines, but the majority of them closed on November 1st. And then the chorus and band both had their concerts. The instrumental concert was on November 1st. And the chorus concert was on October 24th. And then after this last meeting with the Regional School Committee in October, we came up with a list of general goals we wanted to share with you. So it was discussed in the meeting that I know SAC had with some regional school committee representatives and Mr. Martino and Mr. Bevan, that there was a need for student input in artificial intelligence policies to kind of weigh how, like, some verbiage within the student handbook and that sort of idea. So we're planning on working on that this year. And then another thing that we would like to focus on is further kind of figuring out where funds are spent in terms of staffing and where students need more staff available, like, mental health support and that type of thing. And then we know that families get a lot of really great updates as to what's going on in school and what students can expect, but we were trying to find ways that maybe those updates can also be shared with students and maybe that's something we can help with. And then additionally, we also want to continue to look into the use and future distribution of wellness days because, as we know, that, does everyone know what a wellness day is? It's no homework, okay. So there's a lot of mixed results on that. Some students love it on that day, but it also means that tests and homework pile up the rest of the days. So I think just kind of looking into what student feedback on that is and sharing that with the regional school committee and administrators. And then we also want to try to find new ways to receive student input and maybe outside of surveys and coming up with different events. I know the Student Council does, has done, like, coffee, coffee with admin in the mornings, just where people can come grab donuts and share their thoughts on different issues. And we're looking into find, looking to find creative ways similar to that to receive feedback and share it with this group as well. And then we also want to follow up on last year's policies that were brought to the Regional School Committee. The one to establish a middle school leadership position and the one that would give the student representative the power to attend committee meetings. And then additionally, we want to support the Student Council and specifically their policy subcommittee and their goal to improve overall school spirit. And then we also want to try to support the freshman classes transitioning into high school and like the establishment of their student government. Just kind of like establishing some of the norms and like helping them out figuring it, and helping them figure out what they want to do and how to set that up. And then the last slide, does anyone have any questions?
That's a lot of goals.
I know, a little out of breath, but.
Okay, questions? I, I just want to add that though we love hearing Principal Bevan speak and present his principal's report, it is so enlightening and enjoyable to listen to the students' perspective and listen to the same, the very same kinds of things, but presented from, from your outlook and your representation of the whole student body, so.
So I know I mentioned this at the second-to-last meeting last year. But, so there were some cool things that already happened and not having any connection to chorus or band, I didn't necessarily know about them. I'm sure Connor could have told me this, but I didn't. I guess, so my question is, do you post all of these things out in some sort of, like, we talked about sort of, is there some sort of general update that would have all of these things so that we're made aware? So other people can attend, the parents necessarily, or the few who know about them?
Yeah, so on the Friday afternoon emails to families, we try to highlight and I try to draw attention to especially our performing arts events, which I think heavily are attended by our parents who have children there. But I, we like to see everybody come and we put that in ways that we try to draw attention to it. But it's, you know, also in an email with a lot of other information.
Right, but I think what we talked about last year was thinking about, maybe, you know, if we could have some thought to it, putting it in some sort of, like, not, you know, like, some sort of Facebook-like sort of tool, so ultimately you're kind of just posting it.
Yeah.
So, so in other words, going through, you know, the emails are very.
Right, right, right.
Sometimes you get them on Friday night and you don't necessarily spend the time to, to consume the content. So just having it sort of like, hey, alert, this is happening tonight, you know?
A lot for students, I, sorry.
I think you were going to answer the question I was.
Well, I was going to say Instagram and Canvas are big tools for students to kind of get that knowledge. There's a student body Canvas page, which is utilized a lot by different student groups, especially the Student Council and CAF, not CAF, SAC, sorry. I heard that acronym in the last presentation. But so that's how a lot of information gets spread amongst students because all students receive the student body update. And then Instagram, a lot of different clubs have Instagrams. And there's the Gonkgram, which kind of disperses some of the mainstream school news. And then students that are involved in different clubs, they often repost, like, different events and happenings on their stories. And that's how a lot of that word spreads. And then additionally, just for like word of mouth within the building, there's a lot of flyers that you might notice on the bulletin boards and that's additionally how a lot of students share. But I agree, I think that'd be really good to kind of come up with a concrete way to share all those different events and maybe reaching out to club leaders to try to get that done.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess you put some goals down that you want, and it was very extensive. I guess I'd like to implore you to consider, taking you back to your group, sort of figure out, like, I don't want this to be Sean's job. I think, I think, you know, this would be something that I think would be really good to have from the, you know, from the, from the student population saying, this is how every club should be represented. Because we talked about it, you know, we, Greg suggested it. I don't necessarily know that should come from us. I think it should come from you, you know, grassroots. That'd be my suggestion, but consider it.
No, and I completely agree. And I think that's kind of what we're trying to say, like, because I know there's the Friday night, like, email updates. And I think we're trying to think of a way to bring that to students in a way where they won't just look at the email and like kind of disregard it and maybe come up with a fun, more youthful approach to sharing it so that, like, maybe it's on social media and Canvas. And like, maybe it pops up as an assignment, like, weekly update and that way they know to look at it.
Right, and I, I, I love that idea, I think, but I'm also suggesting that we go a bit further in the non-students.
Yeah.
Because it's not necessarily, the students don't necessarily tell their parents necessarily. It'd be good for anyone, but you just have availability. That's just my only suggestion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do see your Instagrams, they're pretty good. I mean, who, all the, the things I can follow, there's a lot to follow. So, yeah.
I just had a question about the artificial intelligence policies and, you know, what sorts of things are we looking at? What are the issues that are cropping up?
Well, so I think a lot of it is that there's a lot of not, there's not a lot of clarity among students right now what the policies are. There's a lot of, you can't use this. But then there's certain assignments where students are requested to use AI. And there's kind of a fine line between what's acceptable and what's not. Like, students are encouraged to use sources like Grammarly, which is a form of AI. But then ChatGPT is like a step over that line if you're writing an English essay. So I think the focus of this would be increasing the verbiage within the student handbook to be a little more clear about what's acceptable and what's not so that students aren't wondering that while they're trying to make, while they're trying to complete their assignments.
Join the rest of the world.
On, if I could, to the chair, on that note, I agree, I think it's great. And I commend you for, for thinking of, of things and putting it down. But I think also PD for the teachers on how to use it effectively because we can't just say no, right? Like, this, this is where we're at. And I think you guys had Greg Kualcheck, I think that's how he said it.
He's coming back.
He's coming back. He's so amazingly awesome. I saw PD from him on this topic.
He's coming back.
That's what he's doing with us in March. Like, mind-blowing, so much.
Yeah, I, I mean, just to clarify a couple of things about it. So Greg Kulewic is coming back in March and doing.
Kulewic.
Kulewic, yeah. Doing a, he'll do two half-days so that we can allow more people to.
Yeah.
Experience it about teachers' use of artificial intelligence. And I think one thing that's, maybe sometimes gets a little bit, I, I think, it, it is, to Paul's point, the whole world's trying to figure this out, right? The, the lines are, are gray and moving at all times. But one thing that is clear for us right now is that ChatGPT does not have data privacy policies that make it okay for students to use it in school. So it is blocked in our system because of their policies. So that is just like one clear line. The sort of extent to which it's okay and not, to your point of like how kids are using it, because they are accessing it. And AI includes Google, right? Like, so it's a, it's a real landscape for us to navigate. We're excited to continue the PD and to continue the conversations.
Anything else? Okay.
I just have one update. So Amelia mentioned the Addams Family. So there are tickets for each school committee member. So if you would like to attend, Principal Bevan has tickets for each of the school committee members. They're $30. Typically $10, but for school committees, we've tripled the price.
I will get them too before we leave tonight. I left them in my office, sorry, apologize. Amelia, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay here if you like, yeah. So just a, an update from Jen Lipton O'Connor, Dr. Jen Lipton O'Connor, who's here to tell us about some of our substance use prevention efforts here at Algonquin.
Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to share a couple of things we're going to be doing this year about substance prevention. So hopefully you can see that image. So we want to talk to you tonight about two of the programs we're doing. So one of them we've done for years, which is the ESPERT program. So it's a state-mandated substance use screening. So it stands for Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment. So the state has required schools to do this for several years now. We've actually been in compliance with this even through COVID. And I'm proud to say we started it during COVID and we've continued it. We actually do it for 10th graders and then for 8th graders as well. And it requires that each 10th grader has a one-on-one conversation with an adult, and that's the screening. And then depending on the, it's a set of questions, it's like a script. And depending on the answers to those questions, the student might be referred to something else. So we've been doing that for many years now. A lot of schools have nurses do it. Nurses have been very busy over the last few years in terms of all the COVID work they've been doing. So we've had the adjustment and the guidance counselors do this work. So you can imagine it's very time-intensive, right, to have these one-on-one conversations. And there's mixed research on whether it's actually effective. So this year, we are part of a study that's through Mass General Hospital and Harvard Medical School. And they're trying to really examine the efficacy of ESPERT. And they have four different conditions of the study. So it's a randomized control study, they have 40 high schools in it. And we actually were assigned to what I think is the best condition, which is because we do the least amount and we get the most from them. So they're actually providing a coach to us for five years. The coach is going to be in our building two days a week. We're going to share it with one other high school, that's a local high school. And that individual person will be doing all of the ESPERTs. So I think, what did I say to you, Mr. Bevan? I think I estimated it's like over 100 hours of like hu- human power that this person is taking, like, off of our plates. So this, through this research study, it's a five-year study. We'll have this person for five years, Mary Ellen Duggan and I, as well as Sean and others from Central Office are, you know, working with them, will be supervising this person in the building. And then any student who sort of screens positively on this will then have some interventions that this person will help with as well. And this person will have a real skill set in substance use prevention. I want to say to you, this coach is not a clinician, it's not a social worker. They're called a near-peer. So the idea is they have, you know, at least a high school diploma. Many of them have some college or are currently in college. But the idea is they're sort of closer in age, right, with our students so they can connect with students in ways that some of us can't. And the idea will be that, right, over time, we'll determine through this study, right, is this enhanced coaching model more effective for students? So that's sort of on this chart, that's our sort of tier-one intervention, one of our tier-one interventions for substance use prevention. And again, this year, we're excited because this person will be joining us and sort of, I think, enhance what we're already doing and then take some of the work off of our counseling staff. And I think I'm excited about how this person can integrate into our school in a variety of ways. Once they get settled in, we're hoping they can really contribute to our school. So that's that tier-one intervention. And then the tier-two targeted intervention for any student who may have admitted to substance use or who actually gets in trouble for any kind of substance use. So there's a program that's also part of Mass General Hospital called I Decide. And actually Janet Brown, one of our system principals, and Erica Almquist, one of our nurses, has sort of spearheaded our participation with I Decide. And the two of them, along with Lisa Connery, were recently trained in I Decide. So I Decide is sort of a substance use intervention that's more targeted. And it's really part of that restorative justice that we talked about, I think, a couple of times last year, really trying to help students learn, right? Give them the tools to understand why, you know, using substances at young ages can affect their brain and all of those things. And really trying to not make it as punitive, but really make it a learning experience. So that's sort of that tier-two intervention. And again, the, the coach that we're getting through the ESPERT program is already going to be trained in the I Decide. So it'll be another person in the building who's trained in that. And then, of course, any student who would need additional services to that, that sort of top-tier three, we have a variety of ways that we would support those students, either with sort of counseling services that we already provide in our schools or often that might be a referral to outside resources at that point. So I think that's my quick overview. Any questions about those programs?
Thank you so much. I think it's really important that we have this kind of programming in schools. And I think it's actually really great that Harvard and MGH are undertaking a study to see if it's effective in actually mitigating and preventing this type of use. So I guess one of my questions is, you said there were 40 schools that are being selected? What, was there a particular criteria that the school had to meet in order for it to be eligible for selection?
There, there were a few things. One of it was just you had to already be doing the ESPERT and you had to be doing it with 10th graders because you can actually, with permission, you can do it with other grades too. You had to want any part of it. You had to have sort of the right infrastructure and people willing to supervise. So some of the other schools, I think, are Shrewsbury, Mary Ellen, do you remember Framingham? So a couple in the, in the Metro West area as well. So we're excited about it.
I, I think it's, I, I think it's great. And in terms of the, the I Decide program, where it's used as a, as an alternative to punitive responses. it's used as a pro, as an alternative to punitive responses, um, I guess my question is how does that fit into our student handbook? If you, if you know off the top of your head, Mr. Bevan. Because I certainly think that I would much rather have mitigation in place to either try to get somebody, you know, off of, uh, off of this use or prevent them from doing it in the first place. But does that completely replace punitive measures or if there's still a repeated issue, are punitive measures still undertaken to some degree?
So last year around this time in November of last year, you might recall the state had like handed all schools, uh, you know, with very little forewarning, um, a major change that reduced how much, uh, outs, out-of-school suspending we could do for certain behaviors and really drug and alcohol, uh, uh, related behaviors would generally speaking fall under that category. And it really compelled schools to just be more inventive and thoughtful about, about sending students out. And we adopted that immediately and it was a uh, difficult pivot for a lot of schools, but we don't get huge numbers of these. So we were able to be really thoughtful. And then when they do, those kind of things did come around, um, we were able to, to layer in and go wi- and, and to develop as they came along, the kind of interventions that didn't really require handbook, um, new handbook policies, uh, that I recall, I'm trying to think. They just benefited students and there's nothing that says we have to outside suspend a student for a certain behavior. We do have a latitude and we were using that latitude to help students to not be outside suspended for behaviors that would have been previously resulting in that kind of discipline. And instead we were looking at more restorative justice kinds of, um, disciplinary measures. Sometimes they weren't terribly innovative, like a Saturday school would fit under that umbrella and it means that they don't miss their, uh, you know, their outside schooling, but it might instead also be working with a, a drug and alcohol counselor to, to get to the bottom of why these behaviors are such a challenge for you. So, long story short, we are, we did adopt those immediately in November of last year. It didn't require a handbook change. Um, our handbook might have been adjusted in the meantime, I have to look closely at it, but we are u- using these exact kind of thought processes in relation to and in response to students' drug and alcohol behaviors.
Yes, that was actually, that kind of goes back to the reason I was asking about the criteria is I wanted to basically make sure or identify whether or not the school had to have a certain incidence rate, um, in order to be selected.
Nope, no.
I don't think so.
More of a willingness and, yeah.
Like for any study, thank you.
I think the key was implementing ESPERT with fidelity.
Yes.
Which we, we had been doing.
Right.
And then I think to Sean's point, you know, the update in disciplinary, um, laws really were required to provide interventions. So this actually is a nice dovetail to what we're required to do and actually provides a nice intervention for many of our students.
I think dovetails nicely with the grants that Northborough's received, the Drug Free Community Grant as well. We're calling it that we're like the Cadillac of substance use prevention around here, right, Mary Ellen?
That's great.
Like we have a lot of resources at our fingertips. And I think, you know, given that two years ago, when we had, when students filled out the Metro West Health Survey, they were just kind of returning from COVID and our substance use numbers had kind of stayed the same. And I think we're predicting they might ju- right, there's more access now because they're back to it. I think our anecdotal evidence might be that there's higher incidences. So I think it makes me feel really good that we have this in place as we're expecting those numbers to jump.
And I would hasten to add also, a large percentage of, I think, the behaviors we anticipate that will be helped by this and helped by the change away from punitive responses and more to this kind of redirection are like low, low level but high frequency, like a student, students found with vapes, for example. And yet at the same time, a student who might be committing some kind of greater crime, we do have the ability to, to use our really conventional, um, measures for outside suspension if we feel like it's a criminal behavior.
Thank you. And then I'll just, um, comment on that this was a team effort. So people, we had to apply for this, we had to do the paperwork. So we had Mary Ellen Duggan, we have Jennifer, we have
Janet.
Janet.
Erica.
Erica. So our goal really this evening was just to provide you kind of an overview of what we're doing. So if you heard about it, you had a sense. And then this spring, have the team come back and do a much more detailed presentation around the I Decide program, some of our early findings.
And we already have students involved in the I Decide already. I think, when did Janet go? It was within the last few weeks. They went to the training and they're already using it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I'm just, uh, gonna update you on a few quick items. Uh, one is that our career exploration innovation leader, uh, we hired that, which I think I reported to you. Her name is Michelle Kalin. We are very excited to have her come and join us. Um, she begins, uh, right after Thanksgiving break and I'm starting to map out what her first weeks and months will look like so that she can have, um, primarily those first weeks and months will be like inventorying what we're doing and getting a sense for our leaders and from our students, like what our needs are and how she can meet those needs. So we're very excited to have her on board. Um, she's also a member of our school community already. She lives here in town. Um, and then I continued a, a major e- effort we have here at the school is to, to work on improving attendance. And one thing we've one major stride we've made since we've last met is to, uh, to activate certain features on Power School that were no, were not previously available, uh, for parents. So one is the tool for parents to, um, to input their own child's attendance. It doesn't sound very glamorous, but they're, they can put in, input their own attendance instead of calling into the office and there, we had a lot of systems that resulted in wasn't very streamlined and the data that came in was not very accurate. And now we're having parents act, um, do that straight through Power School. We're starting that work. But more exciting than that is that stu-, uh, parents now have the ability to access their students' daily attendance, but also their class-by-class attendance and also in a dashboard-style fashion, see, um, all kinds of data about their child's period attendance, including like, are they more likely to be, um, absent first period than last period, which is hard to capture because we have a routine schedule. So, um, that's all in an effort to create better, cleaner data and get it in the hands of families who will probably have a greater um, impact on, on turning around the students' maybe, uh, weak attendance, uh, than we, we are in some ways. So that's a major, um, a, a major effort on our, on our parts. We, and at, when I put this slides together, the data on that day was looking quite good and I, I will continue to look at this closely. Last year, seventeen point one percent of our students were chronically absent, daily absent. And at the, at the end of, at the beginning of November, we were at twelve point six. I don't know that that'll stay or hold because typically, especially seniors get into their senior spring, that's where you start to see these numbers slip. So, uh, we're going to be monitoring that very closely. And I'm hopeful for good results. We are aiming for good results, so.
Can I make a point?
Sure.
So, um, I don't think this relates to that, but I'm happy that the paving has been done on the way to get to Algonquin because plus admit the agita that I got when getting texts about my daughter being tardy because there's tons of traffic, so that it was really hard to get to.
It's their roadwork.
And, and so the fact that she, fortunately we got out of the term, so she didn't get so many that she got attention. Stressful. So I'd be curious to see whether or not, I'd like to see what those metrics were just because of that paving. Because to get over here is very complicated.
Smooth, smooth roads.
There seem to be no exceptions, so I didn't ask for any.
Yeah, and, uh, we do, kids do have a little bit of leeway and they do have room to, to have some tardiness and nowhere in a new term, so I think.
We're also tracking car repairs to see if car decreased as a result.
I had a question on the, um, absence rate. So the seventeen point one percent went down to twelve point six. Did you say that was for like anyone who's absent from a class here and there?
No, this is the daily, the, that's the percentage of students who are chronically ab- daily absent. Um, and ours in last year was seventeen point one percent. So that means seventeen percent of our student body were, were absent on a chronic basis and the state defines chronic as they're missing ten percent or more of their school days. So in a hundred and eighty school days, that's eighteen days. So seventeen percent of our students last year missed eighteen days or more. And
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
It is, yeah. Uh, seventeen percent, uh, we look at our, we looked at our DART data. DART is, um, the, the data, the, it's a list of schools that the state tells, um, tells us are most comparable to us, um, in a lot of using all kinds of different metrics. And our DART schools are around all the same, same area. Um, and that's why we're tackling this is that's more than I'm comfortable with and we want to see that change. At the same time, there are, I think we, that's a luxurious number in a lot of communities and we want to, um, I, the, um, attendance is a real challenge coming out of the pandemic in every community. And so this is a national, this is the result of the pandemic for sure. And students who were having a hard time getting into school before the pandemic, um, and then stayed at home all the way through the pandemic, were not, um, rebounding back into schools as, as easily as one would hope. And so we're spending a lot of time looking at this data and developing tiered interventions to improve it.
Do you know what that number was before the pandemic?
We looked at that in, uh, Mr. McGowan actually looked at that data today and, uh, we were in the twelve to thirteen percent range for chronic absenteeism. I will say our mechanisms for capturing really great and accurate student data were not great. I think those are probably accurate numbers, but they aren't, our, our, our numbers right now were like granularly accurate to the period and we didn't have that before.
So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did, um, identify thirteen hundred schools who had a chronic absenteeism issue. Algonquin was not one of those thirteen hundred. That doesn't mean there's not work to be done. And I think Sean right now and the team are just aggregating the data to take a closer look. But again, I think it's, it's context and perspective. No, we're not happy with those numbers, but at the same time, we're, we've been, not been designated as a high school that has a chronic absenteeism issue.
Yeah. No, I think it's good if you're down basically to pre-pandemic.
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for, yeah.
So how are you advertising the, this Power School capability, you know, to the parents?
So, uh, last week on Friday, I emailed parents to let them know today when I, uh, let them know that report cards were available. Encourage them to use that as an opportunity as they're accessing Power School to check in on their student's attendance record using this tool that we now have. And then what we're also doing is going into the backend to see parents who have not yet logged into Power School this year and start to do some outreach to them to say, appears you've not accessed Power School, which means you've not seen your kids' report cards. And maybe they're looking at Canvas, but we're going to use those opportunities and those tools to say, you know, how can we help you to, to engage with your child's academic record, but also their attendance record and make it a partnership between us and families.
Are you aware of whether or not, uh, a child has two parents on the account? The reason why I ask is because it may be that one parent uses the tools and the other doesn't. So when you start communicating, just think about that with your data.
Yeah, I think we're looking at people for who's, for a child who's, nobody's accessed it, neither parent has, uh, has access to it. Um, and ultimately, ultimately, one of the goals is we'd like to get to the point where we're texting parents at the end of the day if their child has missed a, a class. That's a kind of a high bar, but I think that will really tighten things up and just, it's just clearer, more transparent and more accurate communication.
The tardy thing.
We do the tardy. We do have that ability. That's new this year that we text parents to let them know their child was tardy, arrived, has arrived tardy to school. That was new and the first time we've done that. So it, there's no singular tool or singular feature of the tools we're using that will make seventeen point one percent drop. It's like a combination of, of different tools and, and educating families why it's important for kids to be here, be here on time and, um, and to also make school an engaging and fun and enjoyable place to be. So I think that's the, kind of the big job of the principal too, is not just look at the data, but also to examine the conditions of school to make sure that we're reducing the barriers for kids to get in here.
I just want to emphasize, so that seventeen percent is a number that includes, you know, kids skipping class and tardies and leaving early? Or is that seventeen percent of the student body is not here in the building, like chronically?
Uh, of last year, it was seventeen percent of our student body last year was absent, ten percent of the days or more. So in a two-week period, that'd be one day out of that two-week period because that would be ten percent of a two-week period. So if you just took like a snapshot of a two-week period, one day of a, a week, seventeen percent of our kids were missing one day of that two-week period. If that makes sense, because that would be roughly ten, that would be ten percent exactly. And it, I, I'm sorry?
But it's better than, I just wanted to make sure that nobody thought that on a daily basis, seventeen percent of the student body is not here.
No, on a daily basis, our attendance rate is roughly ninety-four percent.
Okay.
But in that six percent, there's a large, a large number of students who comprise that six percent and six percent of twelve hundred kids is a lot of kids. And so you get to seventeen percent by combining all those kids who may, and you can rack up, I don't, I would not be happy if one of my children missed eighteen days of school. And that's the, just the cusp for, for chronic absenteeism. You have kids who miss more and many more than that's, in some cases. But you can miss three days, uh, or four days a term and get near to that number. And so it's, you know, once every two weeks, missing a school day, once every two weeks would get you to chronic absenteeism. And that's accurate. If you missed work, once every two weeks, once, one day every two weeks, you'd feel like a chronically absent, you know, employee. And so that's important. So we're looking at this very closely and with a lot, a real view on data, but also not losing sight of the fact that there are children behind the data and that we want to find out what's going on that's preventing them from attending school with routine.
Is COVID still a big factor? Because once they test positive, don't they have to stay, stay out of school for five days? Or is that?
It's de- it's diminishing in how much of a factor it is, uh, but I think it, it for sure probably contributed to that seventy percent because you might have a student who's, might have been on the bubble for, for being a chronic absenteeism student and they have COVID and that's five days. So now they have thirteen, you know, only thirteen other days throughout the rest of the year. But we're doing a lot of exciting work. One of the things we've been doing is, uh, to look back at what our chronic absentee students looked like when they were in second and third and fourth grade and all the way through from K through twelve or to wherever they are now and what did they look like in those years when they were little, um, and what looked like really good and fine da- uh, attendance then for us at the high school actually wasn't great attendance then. And we want to learn from that and that regression analysis is part of what we're, what is propelling this work. It's just a, another piece of this work. People are tired of me talking about attendance in, in I talk about it, I talk about it a lot. I do think we've made a lot of strides really quickly, but there's a lot of work to do.
I mean, I think it's obviously really important and thanks for diving into it because it, those are the kids that we the kids that need school more than ever.
Yeah.
And we need to get them here, so.
And one of the conclusions we drew is that students who are not, who are in that group are also, when they're not here, they're not, they're missing learning, but they're also missing a lot of the other things that school provides with its socialization. It might be nutrition, it might be, you know, warmth and shelter. It might be access to mental health. So it's, it, the school is, really comprises a lot more, um, than just the learning. And the students who need all of those things the most by not being here are missing those things. And that's exacerbating, I think, the reasons why they're not here. So it's a bit of a chicken and the egg scenario, which I'm not explaining anything you probably don't already know, but we're learning more with greater clarity that that is a factor. A barrier.
And attendance is a symptom of something that's underlying. So it's not, not just about attendance. It's about, like you said, all those underlying factors that are barriers for kids to show up.
Yes, and I would also say this number, wherever we're at now is going to go up as seniors get into their second semester of their senior year and they have greater agency. They might be into college and what, uh, I joke that this number, twelve point six percent is like weighing yourself the day before Thanksgiving because it's not, you know, the change is going to come here when seniors get into that second semester spring and they have greater, you know, just their, that's going to happen there. Their absenteeism is going to spike and that happens everywhere. Um, and it's not a surprise. So and it's not, it doesn't mean we don't want to try to prevent it or, or reduce it. Um, it's just as the reality that we're trying to kind of mitigate it and reduce it as much as possible.
Great. Okay. And on a similar note, enrollments.
So in your packet, not as, quite as exciting is the enrollment report as of October twentieth, twenty-three. Also, we did receive our NESDEC report, uh, which does speak to, um, looks at enrollment trends, um, looks, takes a look backwards and forwards. We did over, over the past ten years, from two thousand thirteen to fourteen to two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, we had a thirteen percent decline in enrollment at Algonquin Regional High School. Uh, we are currently at a, a floor and over the next ten years, um, to thirty-three, thirty-four, we'll have an eleven percent increase in enrollment. So if you look at the enrollment trends over the, the, the past ten years and look ahead to the future, it's more like a V. So as the school committee has made decisions, um, as enrollment has declined not to So as the school committee has made decisions as enrollment has declined, not to reduce faculty and staff, part of the strategy is that as we see enrollment increase, we'll have the capacity and our experts ready for those increases. Also in your packet is the FY24 monthly general fund expenditure report and the statement of revenue, and I will turn it over to Becky.
Also not as exciting as the So it is included in your packet is the monthly general fund report for both the operational budget and for the athletics budget, and that is as of October 31st. On the operational budget side, we do have $833,506 remaining or 3.13%. So that is down slightly from September, about $230,000, as you would expect to see decreases from month to month. In comparison to last year, we do have slightly more on the bottom line, but we're trending very close where we had $715,000 or 2.78% remaining. One thing I wanted to update the committee on is last month, I had mentioned that we were going to be doing an internal analysis and review of our health insurance. We have completed that, and I am pleased to say that the number that you see on page six is our, what we hope to be is our very accurate estimate of where we intend to land with our health insurance. Obviously, it does fluctuate as staff changes occur throughout the year. But when we had built the FY24 budget, we had anticipated a 10% increase in our health insurance and cost, health insurance costs, and we ended up with a 6.9%. So we will see some savings in that line item. We have also encumbered an amount of money in case of any unexpected expenses related to the athletic complex. And that would be for any additional landscaping or upgrades or things that weren't included in the original project plan. But as far as the FY24 budget, I do feel that we are in a good place right now. In terms of athletics, I will say that we are right on track with where we were last year. So historically, we are at the same place. We have one sport season down, or we're wrapping up, I guess, one sport season with two more to go. And we do have about $150,000 remaining on the bottom line or 46.32%. We have encumbered all of our known expenses that we can. However, with athletics, it is a little bit more fluid depending on the games and the referees. So we are tracking consistently. And just a reminder that the athletic budget is built off of that revolving account that I'll present on in the revenue report, so. Any questions on those reports?
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the FY24 monthly general fund expenditure report until audited.
Second?
Moved by Chris, seconded by Joan. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, excellent. And I ask this every month, do we also do the statement of revenue?
We do, yes.
Do I hear a motion? To approve the statement of revenue of?
I make a motion to approve the FY24 statement of revenue until audited. Second?
Moved by Chris, seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, excellent. And then we are on to the approval of the FY25 capital plan.
Sure, so the capital planning subcommittee did meet and Keith LeBoy and Mike Gorman led that meeting. And Mike Gorman is here to co-present with Keith the plan for FY25.
Excellent. Just going to pop things up on the screen, and it was included in your packet, the draft plan. Like Greg had mentioned, I do want to thank the subcommittee for their work and advice as we navigate through the capital planning process. It was very helpful to have that opportunity to review it. Do want to thank Mike and his team. It's not just about the capital plan, it's about a true identification of what needs the support here at Algonquin for the envelope and the systems that are involved. And as we know, we've had pretty comprehensive capital plans in the past. This is no different. A lot of the things have been moved forward because they are continuing to be priorities and needs for the school. But obviously, one of the major sections of this plan that has been removed is the athletic complex. That was part of our capital plan for a very long time. And with the support of the committee and the communities, we've been able to be very successful with that and have been able to have our students and our community access in a short time. So very, very happy about that. And certainly, when we're looking at the capital plan, it's not just about what the needs are for right now, but also forecasting what's down the road. So that is the work that Mike does on a consistent basis. Not only the larger item things which fall under the capital plan, but more medium-tier items that will be on a maintenance plan and then the day-to-day things that need to be done here at Algonquin. And I think Sean, I wish he hadn't left, but he was commenting on a recent school that he had visited, which I will not name, and then came back to Algonquin and went right to Mike and said, thank you for keeping this place looking good. And that was something that he took away very anecdotally, but quickly from another tour that he had taken. So as we put together the plan, there has been a shift in what the priorities are, just as you would expect, things do change and evolve. Mike's had a, kept a very close eye on that. And one of the things that we're going to highlight tonight are the top five priorities that Mike sees as being part of our capital plan. So it was included in the packet. I'm in a tough time getting that going, but I'll, I definitely turn it over to Mike to get started with the redundant hot water here. Can you all start with that one, Mike?
No, that sounds good. You know, it's hard to believe, back in 2003, 2004, Algonquin started its renovation of the school. And at that time, about 90% of the infrastructure was updated or replaced. Looking at that moving forward, almost 20 years later, some of our infrastructure now is at the end of useful life. And some of that infrastructure, basically, because we have a great preventive maintenance plan, you know, programmed together, it works out that we're in good standings at this time. But it's time to reinvest in the greatest asset we have. But with one of those items, you see that over there? Sure. What was items, basically, a redundant hot water heater. Now, that is a 2003, 2003 hot water heater system. Basically, it's the kind of lifeline for the cafeterias, the athletics, the bathrooms and things like that. And it's time, it's pretty much at the end of its useful life. And we're looking at replacing that and upgrading that to a redundant system. So for that, the next one basically is on a boiler. We have two redundant boiler, Clevo Book's boilers. And basically, one of the main bearings on the boiler, the fan, is, you know, making a noise. It has to be replaced before it comes, does more damage. But in there, there's some victolic fittings in the 10-inch pipes and stuff that are leaking and causing some issues. So what we like to do is look at that, get into there. It's good that it's redundant, we use it as a backup, so we don't have an issue, but it's time to repair. Looking at some of the other things, the glycol loop. The glycol loop, basically, we've had, one of the pumps failed and we had some loss of the glycol. And basically, what we need to do is re, pretty much flush it out, just like your car radiator and just start over again on that. So that is quite costly and something that we need to do.
And that was an addition for this year's plan that wasn't on a previous plan
Correct.
and was added and moved up to a top priority.
And some of these items move up for priorities because, like I said, the pump went, we had, you know, an exposure there. But it's time to move this up and shuffle it. So that's kind of why that moved up, because that kind of goes right with the boiler and heating for the school heading into the winter. So it's something that we want to be looking at. Some of the things as far as, you know, outside walkways and stuff, there's some exposures out there and some maintenance needs to be done. And we like to pay attention to that. New England's tough, tough on everything, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, the walkway is a new exception. But looking at some of the lighting software, lighting software, basically what controls the whole school, our energy management's tied into that, it's pretty much not supported anymore. It's still functional, but you know, if it goes down, it's going to cause some disruption. So we want to keep that on our radar. Looking at that, as far as, you know, energy saving, we're always looking for energy-saving programs to do to try to save and recoup back on ROI on something like that. So it's low-hanging fruit, we like to do that. Sometimes, you know, it's hard, that's why it's up a little bit more. Probably should be below the guidance HVAC system, but they're all have the same priorities, honestly. We had a system that failed and basically, it's on the cooling side, the heating side's functional, but it's not cost-effective to repair it at this time. It's just, it's just sinking too much money into the unit and it should be replaced.
So Mike, for guidance right now, the heating system is functioning properly. It's a cooling, and we did offset that with some, you know,
Spot coolers.
spot coolers and things like that to get us through the season. But we, you know, would like to see that's something we take care of in the next eight months.
I mean, if anybody has a question too, just ask it, you know, because going down the list, you know, I'm not sure if this one will make it, but one of the things we're looking at is kind of low on our carbon footprint. And we had a 4,500 mower out there that basically is at the end of its life cycle, and it's time to replace it. Looking at that, we looked into some robotic mowers, believe it or not, that battery-operated, solar-powered, and they could cut that whole field and maybe we won't have to replace that mower. But keep the mower in the background for a backup, you know what I mean? So these are things we're thinking about, trying to find ways to save, you know, save labor and things like that. Roof, again, we have to kind of look at roof. I know we went down, we're pretty much down to the bottom of some of those though. The roof, we do have some, the roof now is about 18 years old, it was done in phases, you know what I'm saying? So there are some spots, nothing major, but there are some spots that are going to need some attention. Instead of replacing the whole roof, you know, if we could, you know, do some repairs or if we have some funding that's available from the grants and things like that, we're going to be looking into that.
Why don't we pause there, Mike? I know we had a lot of projects, some, you know, like the glycol one was definitely a new one. The ones you've definitely heard about before, the redundant hot water system, that's something we've brought forward before. And the victolic fittings is definitely something that we've discussed as well as the sidewalk repairs. But was there anything on that top eight list that you wanted some more information about or wanted a little deeper explanation for? Paul?
Yeah, on the roof, you know, we just had a solar meeting today.
We did.
We talked about solar on the roof. Would by any chance, the roof in question be part that might be replaced for that solar project?
Not specifically for that project, but I had the same thought because I was also thinking of tonight. This is something we could explore when those grant opportunities become available, not just where we're going to put solar, but how much of the roof can get done. I'm hoping that opportunity would be available through the grant, but I'm not sure.
Good.
I have a question about some of the costs. So for example, if I'm reading this right, the redundant domestic hot water boiler, it was going to cost 180, but we deferred it, so now it's obviously more. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is.
But what about some of these other ones that are less money now, like the clocking project and trim repair, weatherproofing? That was estimated at 50,000, but now 17.
We've been doing it through the operating budget.
Okay.
We've been nipping at it, we've been trying to knock it down and do a little bit out of the operating budget. But it's, you know, it is a large school and it is getting, you know, to a point where we should earmark a certain amount of funding
Okay.
and just, you know, do it as a program to stay ahead of it.
Yeah, and that's a good way of putting it. So what you'll see is that that's kind of like if we were to do a large chunk, it would be in a larger swoop. But if you, you know, graduate that over the five years of the plan, you're able to do a section at a time, prioritizing those areas that are most impacted right now and going from there.
I know this is relative to a lot of the other costs here, this is relatively, relatively small money, but for the glycol loop,
Mm-hmm.
as that's leaked over time, is it just been replaced with water or has it been replaced with glycol?
It's been replaced just with water.
So are we still at the point where we're safe from freezing? In other words, is the, are we still at a ratio where, number one, the anti-corrosion properties are still reasonably decent?
Yeah.
And that in the event that the heating system does fail, they're not going to freeze?
Yeah, we're in pretty good standing on that, you know what I'm saying? But we're on the low end of that. With New England weather, it's kind of crazy and power outage and stuff like that. But if we did, we would just slush. It won't freeze and burst, but it'll slush. It'd just cause more problems there.
Any other questions? So, I mean, you know, collectively, it is a very comprehensive list. I don't believe any of the other ones are, I'm trying to double-check, are new. Were there any items, Mike, that you think would be worth giving a little more background on, just so we have a full perspective? I know, well, the ground tractor, I think what we, the idea would be, if we did go with a robotic mower, we wouldn't need the ground tractor, right?
We would just keep the older tractor for a backup and try to use the robotic setup. It worked out. We demoed it out there, we had them cut the field and stuff like that, and it was pretty impressive. So it's, it's just like the
Can you get the robotics team to make you one?
Seriously. They just got a donation from a video, let's make it happen here.
Yeah, the robotic team was out there at that day.
I bet they were.
All over it. It was good.
Excellent. So I, you know, I mean, we could literally spend probably nine hours on this because it is quite comprehensive. It is a lot of work to put these together. One thing worth noting is as we're estimating this out, many of the vendors that we're working with are giving us quotes that are only good for like 30 days, 60 days if we push it. So let's say if we were to allocate a certain amount of funding, that 215 for the redundant hot water heater might not be 215 when we're done. So we got to be realistic to current conditions. And when we have the money that's available, we could very quickly, Mike and his, you know, group of vendors that we work with can quickly put together a procurement to get that done once the costs arise. But that will not be definitely 215. I want to make sure the committee was aware of that as an example.
But just to be assured, those numbers, those numbers are pretty darn close.
Pretty good.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So we're trying to anticipate, you know, like not touching it now, you know, for another six months and things like that, but.
So Matt Spencer is the regional school committee member who's on the committee, and he is not here tonight, obviously, but he sent me some comments that I'm going to just read. Do you want to ask me any questions? "To my fellow committee members, I apologize, I am unable to participate in tonight's school committee meeting. However, I did want to share my thoughts on the draft capital maintenance plan reviewed at the capital planning subcommittee meeting on November 2nd, 2023. As an overarching theme, while the facilities team has done an exemplary job maintaining the high school building and equipment, our assets are aging and in need of attention. As reported to the subcommittee, many of our key systems and equipment were purchased 15 to 20 years ago between 2003 and 2008, when the last major renovation of the school took place. Although we may not currently be in need of another major renovation, there is $2+ million of identified repair and replacement needs that will, needs that will be, need to be addressed in the coming years, most of which were previously identified in last year's plan. As committee, I believe we need to secure the financial resources necessary to address these aging assets in a thoughtful manner over a manageable time period, which in theory should reduce the total cost of our assets by avoiding unplanned maintenance and recovery due to system downtime and failure. With that background, I would advocate for a planned $500,000 line item in the current year budget with the expectation of a comparable line item for at least the next five years to allow the facilities team to address replacement and repairs on a prioritized basis with the knowledge of future financial resources that should most likely be available." Matt? So, discuss.
But I can make some general comments. So I think the capital planning subcommittee did talk about strategy, that this building is Town of Northboro and the Town of Southboro's largest facility and asset. That the regional school committee really has not put forth any warrant articles or any debt assessment for capital projects in almost a decade, with the exception of the athletic complex project. So the strategy really that was discussed, that if you look at the bottom line of each year of this draft capital plan, you invested, you know, 400 to 500,000 annually, the committee will have accomplished many of the items on the capital plan. The, the decision of the committee is not to add money to the operational budget to fund these capital projects, but really to think about approving an amount that would be then a debt assessment to each of the communities. And much like the athletic complex, once the school committee approves the debt, then we have seven days, Becky, to then notify each of the communities that we plan on assessing X amount of dollars. From that point, each town From that point, each town then has sixty days to bring it to a town meeting for a vote to approve or disapprove. If no action is taken to the towns, then it's automatically approved. So the thinking would be to time this such that the school committee would potentially vote a five, a a dollar amount for debt assessment. We'd communicate and align that with town meetings. And then the town uh people can either have no comment or disapprove of the assessment.
And both towns would have to.
Both towns would have to.
I have a question. As a member of the capital subcommittee, and we did meet on November the second. The one that you, that was handed out to the subcommittee, there were eleven projects. There were, there were, you know, not the top priorities, but there were eleven that we looked at. Now there's seventeen. And then I know Keith, you talked about at that meeting, top five priorities, which were the redundant domestic hot water boiler, boiler number one, boiler motor, heating, cooling, glycol loop system, outside accent border walkway repairs. I didn't get number five.
The the lighting control software.
Is that number five?
That would be, yep.
So are these, when we talked about it in the capital subcommittee, are those five still the five top priorities? We take a vote on this tonight, are we taking the seventeen we have here? That are in green?
Well, I think the way that I would um, I like, I love the way that Matt read it. And I think that accurately kind of um describes our conversation with it. And so what I would hope to do is if we were able to have, let's say, a a five hundred thousand dollar budget number, Mike and I would regroup and and as and determine how many of those top five priorities we could take care of within that, which would be an active procurement, right? We would definitely want to get some solid numbers for those, make sure, I mean, these numbers are good. And the hope would be if we did have that budget, that we would be able to take care of those top five priorities, yes.
I think that's a a good strategy to go ahead.
Sounded great to me.
Before we'd we'd vote on the capital plan and then go through and say these are the top. So that's why the meeting was eleven, now we're up to seventeen, so that was, I just need that confusion.
Yes, no, and and so what's missing from what you have in your packet is the numbered list, that that column on the left was cut off, um, which does have it numbered, one, one through sixteen. So the goal would be to take care of those top five priorities.
Okay. So when you look for approval of the capital plan, you're looking for a dollar amount? No, 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 no.
No. It would just be for the approval that these are capital.
So I think two, two parts.
Two parts, yeah.
Approving the capital plan.
Okay.
And then a second, I think we need to have more conversation as a committee around the strategy. Becky and I can work on developing a a strategy for you.
So that's in the future?
Present in December.
Okay.
And then, and then at that point, um, you know, we would have a plan around, you know, what are the mechanisms to approve, to to move forward with a certain amount to um.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome. I don't think I did that, but.
I think you did. It's clear to me.
Good.
Um, a couple of comments. Um, I think it can be, um, it's important to note that even though we call this the capital improvement plan, this is a capital repair plan. This is, we are, we're not really improving anything.
The complex.
Right, the, yes, but it's, but point being that um, you know, when I, when I fix my car, I don't really improve it. I make sure it keeps working. But um, I definitely wouldn't say it's improved. But um, I would like to um make it a, I guess, a couple of comments. I don't think either town has any special town meetings planned before our annual meetings, correct?
Correct.
It is within the power of our, we can't necessarily ca- I'm not saying we should, but it is within our power, not necessarily to call a meeting, but to essentially force a meeting if we felt that these were so essential that they needed to go before the town or make the towns have the opportunity to vote on them, if we felt that there was gonna be a system failure before town meetings. Just, just to make that clear, we do have the ability to to do that if we felt that a system was gonna fail and the ability for the structure to function properly with students in it would become problematic. But you don't anticipate that as being an issue, correct? Are you, we, we, no crystal ball here, but but.
What I'm saying is the the department, facility department is doing everything they can to keep everything safe and bringing it to the board, you know, the committee at a timely manner. You know, um, you know, some of those things, like you say, we do have some time on it. That's why we're out in front and that's why we're doing this. But we don't have a ton of time and we don't have a crystal.
And I can, I can say, I think, I can speak for all of us when I say that, you know, we appreciate the effort that the the facilities department is putting into keeping this facility operating in the condition that it's in. I think it's important that we make this a future agenda item, that if we know what the town meeting dates are going to be in the spring, that we make sure we time it in such a way that whatever the appropriate meeting is, we have a vote and we move forward with these, with at least, you know, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars worth of these projects. So we're not discussing the same thing year after year after year. Because I think we've been doing this since I joined the committee four years ago.
I'll continue deferring it.
Yeah, and I think in terms of strategy, what we can present at the December meeting is, are the school committee options. You know, you could vote it in December and, you know, again, how does that play forward? What if you voted in February, how does that play forward March? I do also, in terms of the regional agreement, although I'll use Matt's number, five hundred thousand dollars, it's apportioned by the regional agreement. So it's not five hundred thousand dollars for each community.
Exactly, it's two fifty.
And, you know, when you look at a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility and you look at um the capital projects that were not done over the past decade, it's pretty impressive that the building is in the shape it is. Uh, but we can't continue, that's not sustainable. Nor is it a way to maintain this investment.
Well, yes, I agree, but considering what we've known and learned over the last twenty years, should we be also considering potentially increasing our business as usual, our run budget? Because otherwise we're gonna keep on doing this every twenty years. And so I guess I question whether or not Keith and team need more money as 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 an ongoing, even after the five years.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that the goal was um the the debt for the renovation that took place in two thousand and three is paid off in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
So that is, that is another opportunity for this, the school committee to take another close look at making some significant investments in repairing or improving um the facility. So that always was the plan. And, you know, although we're, we're at that point where things need to be replaced, we're s- it's still, we're still within that window of, you know.
Opportunity.
You know, they've been maintained well and we're still getting useful life out of them, but we're at the window now where we need to start investing.
You know, we've got us here with the preventive maintenance, the team does, honestly, you know, that's kept us to, to where we are now, so.
And we can't, we can't replace things when they're not ready to be replaced because, you know, we're trying to budget them out over time. It's, part of it is, you know, when you have a renovation, everything, like, you know, you buy a new house, your fridge, your stove, your, all the things age at the same time. And we just need to budget that out.
And the life cycles, these are.
I have a couple of thoughts. First, on the timing, I mean, no matter what we do, we're talking about the fiscal twenty-five budget here, right? So whether we're paying for this out of operating budget or capital, it's not gonna be approved until the spring town meetings of both towns anyway. So that's kind of a moot point. But I I do favor the capital route and whether the number is four hundred or five hundred thousand, you know, I like the idea of going for four, five years, so just so we don't have to come back to town meeting every year with this. And, you know, after that, maybe we change the number to to be honest point. So I, I mean, I definitely think that's the route to take. I mean, to me, it's very similar to the, what we do with the athletic complex. We just have to time it accordingly. I mean, I know the Southborough town meeting is gonna be in March, late March, so go from there, I think. You know, Northborough is usually shortly after that, but. So I I think that's a perfectly reasonable plan and that I, I think the towns will go for it because, you know, everybody understands these things don't last forever and you gotta invest in them to, so they don't fall apart.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
I make a motion that we um.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That we uh vote to approve the FY twenty-five uh. I'm sorry, no, I apologize, uh, capital, do we already do the capital plan?
No.
No, okay. I I make a motion to approve the FY uh twenty-five capital plan as presented this evening.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Karen. Any more discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thanks.
All right, so budget priorities. So the oper- the operational budget subcommittee also met and um took a look at the FY twenty-four budget priorities as a baseline and developed a draft for considerations, discussion for the FY twenty-five uh budget process.
Okay. Was anybody on the operational? No, everybody is not here, who was, who was there at the meeting?
I was there.
You were there?
I support all this.
So my comment is that I know we had or briefly talked about the the inequity of opportunity providing all students access to challenging curriculum, that's all fine and that's a goal always. But the fifth year program for students who wish to pursue an alternative pathway to post-graduation, and I think is um not a priority at this point in time, since we just hired the career innovation exploration leader. But I think I got the title right. Because there's so much for that person to do before even delving into this, I just don't see how that can be a priority right now. Personally.
I I agree with Karen. I'd be interested in making sure that there's a focus on making sure that students that are not necessarily college bound or interested in college um within the four years that they have here at Algonquin um are made aware and pursue programming in that alternative pathway. Um, so I'm not exactly sure um if our focus should be on the fifth year after students have graduated as opposed to, much like we build up a college experience for them over the course of their four years that they're here, we should also be making sure that students have career pathways to explore during the four years that they're, that they're here before they graduate.
Right.
So do we just want to eliminate this one?
Do people know what, have you explained this yet, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's twofold. It's really, it's really how do we create revenue? How do we create revenue generating programs so we can fund things like OPEB and other things we have and provide students with good opportunities beyond the four years? So, you know, I think that um, you know, whether it's a budget priority or not, doesn't, doesn't mean we can't explore it. So whether it's on this list or not, doesn't mean that, you know, we can't have, you know, Michelle take a look at it. And it's definitely not gonna happen, it's, you know, it's not gonna happen next year, you know? And um not having it here and spending more time talking about it, thinking through it.
Yeah, by the same token, because it's a budget priority, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna budget for it.
Exactly, yeah.
We don't have a special education chair.
We do, we, we have a um assistant director of student support services who focuses just on the high school. Um, we have, and she serves as part of the chair, the team chair. Um, we've had a school psychologist, Sean, incorrect me from wrong, who's also been part-time team chair, but we don't have a full-time team chair person.
We have a full-time team chair for every other, there's not a math chair?
Uh, we have department chairs, yes, but this is, this is different.
This is a different role.
I appreciate it's a different role, but special education isn't its own department.
So Carolyn Flynn.
Carolyn is the department.
Was the department chair. So the special education team chairperson really um facilitates the the special education process for all special education students. So they schedule meetings, they lead special education team meetings, they guide the special education process for all of our special education liaison. So it's a different position from our department chair of science, for example.
Kind of the same name, though?
Yes.
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 That is what it's called everywhere, though. It's called the team chair. It's not just specific to this district, every district, um, they call it a team chair and.
I understand, I guess I'm just surprised.
It is.
Surprised there is a team chair.
You, you're right, you're absolutely right. Yeah.
Have we, is this the first time we ever asked for it?
Nope. That's why it's on the sheet. So, but that, but that's like a perfect example is like, why should we have something here that we're like, this, we can say it's a priority, but we're gonna explore it, but not, when something like that is a real priority? Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
Can I just go back to um the fifth year program? It'd be a a self-funding, it wouldn't be an impact to our operational budget, so it'd be a self-funding program. So again, whether it's there or not, it's, it doesn't prohibit us from exploring it.
I guess in that case, I would be interested in hearing about, hearing about that. My understanding is, um, and through the chair, obviously, I apologize, um, is that in the event that there were budgeting decisions that needed to be made, this would be the list of priorities. So what we're basically saying is make sure this stuff stays in, correct?
That's what I don't understand. If it's a, if it's a self, if it's something to make money, why is it on the budget?
Doesn't need to be, and that's why they're.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we eliminated it from here, where would we put it?
I don't think it falls off our radar, I still think it's an idea that we're pursuing.
Improvement plan and.
I mean, I think that the the reality is, um, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity to generate revenue here at Algonquin Regional High School. So the model that we look at is that we, we have an operational budget and we go to the taxpayers and we fund everything. So there are other models that we can look at, that we can create programming uh for our students that are actually revenue generating that create opportunities for us. I'll use in in Southborough, for example, the Southbrook extended day program, the Northbrook extended day program. Those are all businesses within businesses that generate revenue and provide a service for our community for a population that maybe needs that type of service. So how to stay alive is we would, you know, welcome Michelle, you know, and as Michelle builds out the program, have her also investigate these types of opportunities for kids.
Yeah.
So we put it in her plan?
Yes.
But we're gonna take it off here, is that what I'm hearing? Because it doesn't really.
Doesn't really.
Help anybody budget, prioritize their budget, right? Okay, so.
Can I make a motion?
You may make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the fiscal twenty twenty-five budget priorities with the exception of the fifth year program item.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Chris. Any more discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
All right, so also in your packet is the FY twenty-five budget calendar. So Cheryl is adding dates fiercely as we move into the budget season. So I believe I did share with the committee kind of key milestone dates that will be taking place over the next couple of months. And again, if those dates change, we'll communicate out with the committee. Lastly, uh, the athletic complex project update. So um Becky will provide a financial update and then Keith can provide some highlights on where we are with the overall project.
So what I've provided in your packet is just a high-level overview of where the project stands in terms of um the the budget that was proposed initially. Our original estimated budget was compiled by Gale Associates. Um, and it was seven million, three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. So when they were putting together their schematic design, they came up with a proposed budget as to where they thought this project would come in. David W. White Sports Construction was our lowest bidder and their bid was submitted at exactly seven point three million dollars. So you can see this left us with a contingency of about ninety-one thousand fifteen dollars. To date, we have approved.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So the, the seven point three million dollars, the amount we had, included a ten percent contingency for this overall project. So Gale Associates was projecting that the budget would be six point three million or six point four million. The lowest bid that came in was DW at seven point three million, meaning that as we entered the project, our ten percent contingency was gone. And we had nine, we had the ninety-one thousand dollars for a contingency fund. And for a project this size, there were a lot of sleepless nights. So I just want to comment that, you know, we've been operating this project with a lot of moving parts with a ninety-one thousand dollar contingency, which I think, you know, Becky has done an amazing job, and Mike Gorman and the project team. I think that could be lost. I know not on the committee, but on the larger community.
Good point.
So to date, we have approved-
Sorry, Becky.
No, that's, no, that's, it's good. To date, we have approved change orders that total eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. So that leaves our amended contract amount being seven point three eight million, which is very close, obviously, to the original amount. And it is a difference of just over ten thousand dollars. We have had, also included in your packet is just an outline of the change orders that we've had here to date. So we've had fourteen change orders in total. Seven of those were for credits to the district, and those totaled two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. And then there were eight where it was an additional expense to the district, and those totaled three hundred and eight thousand dollars. I also wanted to point out that, if you notice, we have a little note on change order number twelve, where we had a fifty thousand dollar non-project-related expense that will come from the operational budget and is not included in this bond amount. And so that was something that was unexpected as part of that, and so we did absorb that in the operational budget.
Can I speak to that briefly? So we had a pre-existing condition, which is PFAS. So the overall impact on this project as a result of mitigation efforts, I believe, was two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Again, a significant amount as we entered this project. So we were required to hire an LSP and some mitigation. So fifty thousand dollars of, of the funds that Becky's speaking to really was as a result of a pre-existing condition that we had to deal with in order to move the project forward. So hiring an LSP, coming up with a plan to really mitigate the PFAS situation on the fields.
Where did that, so I remember that it had to be stored here for quite a while. Where did it end up going?
So we, so we worked with our LSP, and we worked with the Department of, what, I forgot.
Environmental Protection.
DEP.
DEP. So basically, the plan was that to keep the soil on site, to remove the soil from the site would have cost two point eight billion dollars approximately.
At minimum.
Not an option. So working with DEP and our LSP, we kept it on site. And if you look at the javelin field, the soil is on the javelin field, so that was raised up about two feet.
And not just on site, but within the construction-
Yes.
Site. So it's not like it could have been used in the front of the building or to the east side. It had to be within the, you know, relative confines of the construction zone, which I do give credit to DW for being creative and making sure that that happened and really trying to reduce our pile of soil as much as possible. And we're in a decent place with that. And, but the javelin field was raised to fall within that compliance.
Before anybody gets too up in arms about remaining, I mean, wasn't the main culprit, the source of the PFAS, just fertilizer?
It was. So the LSP report, you know, is actually two, I would identify this, two sources. And one was identified as the fertilizer, as well as the spraying of mosquitoes that was done prior when we were having our fun triple E outbreaks.
So I imagine, I hope that that's obviously noted in this project.
Very much so.
So that later on, when we have to replace it.
So it will be monitored by DEP.
Yeah.
We are, we're, you know, we actually, because we were able to provide the DEP with evidence, our LSP was able to provide evidence that the repeated spraying of particular product was the source of the PFAS. PFAS is also ubiquitous in the environment, so it's a great, it's-
Yeah.
So I think we, you know, I think, you know, it's primarily from the mosquito spraying that the state sprayed for years on our site. We did also do a risk assessment, so the LSP part of the risk assessment and found no, no additional risks to our student athletes using the javelin field.
Okay.
Which, which was-
Because that's my next question, like-
Which was included in his final report, which we have in hand.
I will say that, you know, we were very fortunate to work with Beta Group and particularly Joe McLaughlin, who was the LSP. He was outstanding. He was a person of integrity. He, he was very thorough. I think we were very fortunate working with, with Joe, Beta Group, and I think we're here today. On a success story as a result of his consultation and guidance.
And we did, the other piece of that that's important to note is that the DEP did review his final report and gave it the thumbs up.
Okay.
Which is an email that is worth a lot of gold.
Seven point three.
Seven point three, yeah. But Joe did say that that's, that, you know, that doesn't happen without good due diligence and self-reporting and being in front of it and being transparent. That, that came with a good effort on Joe's part to help us navigate it and doing it upfront versus some type of reactionary process. So, you know, I agree with Greg. I feel fortunate. We did have Joe, and he was able to get us to that point of giving this, the DEP to give us a thumbs up, which was, was great to see.
A thumbs up meaning, you know, we had many meetings with DEP.
Yep.
They don't ever give you the thumbs up. Basically, they said, that sounds like what we talked about.
Right. Which is a thumbs up. Translation, thumbs up.
Were we largely in uncharted territory there?
One hundred percent, Paul. I mean, yeah, to say I knew what PFAS even meant prior to this would be an understatement. Learned a tremendous great deal, got a lot of information from not only Joe, but DEP was also very helpful. They were very, they wanted to, you know, teach us the most common thinking, and it's even a little uncharted for them.
That's what I meant.
And we are providing them with some evidence on how to handle these types of situations, which they appreciate as well.
That's our side business. We can consult for other high schools putting in term deals.
That'll pay for the maintenance of the building.
No joke. I mean, this could be a case study for any town that wants to do anything going forward.
So as far, yeah, Becky, we stole your thunder.
It was done, so it's perfect.
So where, so this is phase one. So obviously, we have the amenities building as phase two. So that's another part of the approved appropriation. So Becky, you want to talk about that?
Actually, we have selected a designer. There was a committee where we had put together and requested, request for quotations or qualifications, excuse me.
Qualifications. The other crew, the other queue.
And so it was actually Mike, Paul, Keith, and I who sat on that committee. We reviewed the two firms that submitted results, and we have selected RGB Architects from Rhode Island, and we will begin working on preparing the schematic designs for the amenities building with the hope that we will be able to go out to bid. The plan was to go out in December, so it's a pretty aggressive timeline, and they've said that they're able to work with us.
And I want to talk about where we are with the project.
Where we are. Well, we're very excited to, and with Sean's good work of communication, we were able to open up the track to the community on a restricted basis, but get a feel for the space and enjoy the track while we don't have any daylight, so we were able to turn on the lights for folks. But still, I mean, that's just a huge, another huge milestone for, for the project. So where we are and what's left. There is some site work that needs to be completed, paving and other things like that that are, that are in progress and we're waiting for. We have a, we obviously will have a punch list for the project that needs to be completed. And then we have the grandstand, which is still missing some components. It's an erector set that's about three-quarters of the way done, so we are hoping to get that tied out relatively close soon. And then the press box has been on backorder for a while, and we're waiting on the final approval for, for that. And that will be a drop and go. That's not going to be a build on site that is being manufactured offsite, brought in on a trailer and a crane, and then, and then dropped into place and then, and then secured and tied in. So there, you know, although we feel very good about where we are, there are still some high, you know, large items that need to be done, and we're going to see it through. I would say DW has been a fantastic contractor to work with. They're providing us updates on a, on a daily basis as needed with what we still have left and, and what we need to have decisions about. So that's been, that's been very exciting. And then obviously, we'll be graduating from phase one into phase two, which Becky just commented on, which will be the amenities building, in the hope is that construction will begin in early twenty-twenty-four, with the hopes of having it completed for the start of the spring season. So that's still the goal. It's aggressive, but we're hoping for it. What's that?
You said it will be.
It will be. Yep.
That's all.
Just make another comment or two, but I've, you know, just been endlessly impressed with, with the whole team working on this project. As Greg said, Becky and Keith, and I would include Greg, just keeping track of these change orders. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's not on this list. There was just a lot of back and forth. And Mike Gorman, too, was just endlessly helpful. I mean, he was the only one, I think, who could go toe-to-toe with these guys on, on pumps and power, variable speed drives and, you know. So kudos to you, Mike. It was just a great job all around. So, thank you.
On that happy note, are we done with this topic?
We can go on if you want, Kathleen.
We are almost done.
Let's stop it.
So as part of the, the project was the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. So the Town of Southboro CPC did fund its portion of the tennis court, pickleball with CPC funds. Northboro elected not to. So what we need to do is we need to take that portion of the project as kind of a separate financial package and come up with an intermunicipal agreement, which Becky has to share with you this evening.
And I did leave a revised copy at everyone's place. There was another town in the document that was shared with you. I guess I caught it in the first paragraph and not later in the document. So this is newly revised. This has been prepared by our bond counsel, Lock and Lord. And so this would be an agreement that both towns would need to, to sign off on. It basically states that we have been authorized to borrow the full amount, the seven point nine amount of money, and that Southboro's portion would be reduced by, by the CPC funds, which is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that the two communities would then agree to allow Southboro to make that payment upfront, which would then reduce their, their portion of the total construction costs. The hope is, and we've been working with our financial advisor, is that we could potentially bond this portion of the project separately so that it would be a cleaner process in terms of allocating the debt assessment to the two towns. So that's something that we continue to work on with our financial advisor. I will also note that he has put together a, a template for payments that we would want to, or he's preparing it, that we would want to attach to this agreement so that the towns would see exactly how this would be broken down between the two communities.
So what kind of action do we have to take on this? Because I see it says regional school community and has a lot of lines.
So I think, so I think it's a partnership with each of the select boards. So I think, you know, I think we have a good draft. We need to finalize this draft. I would like to bring this forward to each of the town administrators so they can bring it to their select board, and then it's a matter of making sure everyone understands, and then having all the parties sign the agreement. And just, I'll just emphasize that the reason why we have an IMA is because we are operating outside of the regional agreement and debt assessment. We're, we're doing something a little bit different. So it's not typical, but it is, many towns have IMAs for a variety of reasons. So our next steps would be, you know, you now are aware of the IMA. Any feedback to Becky? We'll continue to work with our financial planner and bond counsel. We'll continue to work with the towns, and then bring all the parties together and finalize and execute.
So does, can we request that the selectmen sign this first?
We can, yeah.
Because, I mean, historic, there was a huge brouhaha between the two towns years ago, I think over the high school.
Yes.
And it was related to one of these.
And, you know, the bond counsel that we're using was the bond counsel that kind of navigated that challenge. And I think the comment from the bond counsel is like, this is so easy compared to what, what existed. But I think that-
That one was a lot more complicated, yeah.
But yes, we can, and we, and we have been working with the town administrators and the select boards behind the scenes. So we, they've already had some input under this document. So yes, long answer.
All right. Moving on to old business. Twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four subcommittee and liaison assignments. I'm done. What's on there is on there. Those committees you're on, please show up. For any requests for changes, let me know. Policy development, distribution, none at this time. Audience sharing. Any more audience sharing from the table? Because we have no audience in the chairs. Nope. Okay. Personnel, distribution of personnel report.
In your packet for review.
Okay. Communications none at this time. Approval bills and payrolls, we do electronically. Agenda items for next month. So we got the FY twenty-five preliminary budget, class-size ratios, standardized assessment results, multilingual learner data and presentation. Do you have that as January? Or is that in person, Jan? Actually, better January. And what else do we discuss?
That's a lot.
I know it's a lot, but there was something tonight that we were going to revisit next month.
Capital plan.
Capital plan. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm sorry. Could we go back to the personnel report for a second?
Yes.
So I see there's a guidance council who's resigning. Do we have another one who's on?
So we had two guidance counselors who had unique opportunities. And unfortunately, it was in October and November. It was not because they aren't happy with Algonquin Regional High School. It was really around lifestyle, commuting, location changes. So we honored their requests. And, you know, we're actually in a good place, too. We've done some hiring and-
That's where I was going.
Those positions are, are in the process of being filled.
Yeah, so one person we hired, and I think we are very lucky to have this person come on board and has seasoning and some very strong skills and starts on December fourth. We have a person who's in the department, who's covering a long-term subposition that expires at the end of December, and that person will take over the, one of the positions that goes through to the end of the year. So we'll really only have about a month of, of kind of coverage needed, even though we had one person out on maternity leave and two resignations. It's all come together with, I think, outstanding leadership by the department head, and we've got students voiced in on the interviews. We're, I think, we're in a good, we're in a good place and very confident that the spring and the rest of the year will be uninterrupted.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, and it's by Chris, then it's by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor? We are adjourned.